Twelve. Do the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm sure that all commissioners are present with Commissioner Marsh on the phone. First item on their agenda is collection of chair. Open nominations for chairman of the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would nominate Dean Franchuk to be chair of the commission for 2024.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I would, I would agree with that. I think he's done a great job this last year and it'll just continue with him running it smoothly.
Thank you.
Is that a second?
Yep, that's a second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move nomination cease, casting unanimous ballot for Dean Franchuk.
Roll call vote then. Voting. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Mr. Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Chair abstains. Next we have the election, uh, next an election of the vice chair. To have a nominee, open nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to nominate Neil Messer as our vice chairman.
Okay, with motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none then. Move to vote then for the vice chair. Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
I guess I get to abstain.
The chair votes aye, motion carried. Next do the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
I'll make the change for the transfer of the funds of the vehicle for the park board.
Okay. We put that on the park board commission items we got on there and just add to that or, okay?
And just wanted to visit about county owned property. We had an approach and so I just want some clarification and direction on that.
County owned property?
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Don't look for motion to approve the agenda.
So moved as amended.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next we have a minutes from our December 5th meeting in 2023. Is there any corrections to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from December.
December 5th? Okay.
Second minutes.
Second. All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. And we have our meeting at December 27, 2023. Any corrections to that minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes for the December 22nd, or 27th, 2023 meeting.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And we have a accounts payable. Is there any questions, the accounts payable?
I move to approve accounts payable.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? There was a bill we had to move from capital.
Yep, so I actually have two bills. Um, I have one that is from Catalyst or previously government office. That is for our new website. That needs to be paid and it's $2,544 and it would come out of the IT budget. Um, we, there were some determinations on whether it was the older, the new website, but it is the new website. So I need to add that to the accounts payable for 2,054. And then I also have, um, one for capital improvements that the road department did some electrical. And they would like to take the 2,24430 out of the capital improvements account.
What was that number again, Karen?
It's on page four, the last item.
It's 2,24430. It is on your capital improvement sheet. But the commission just has to authorize that that's okay to come out of specifically capital improvements.
Okay.
Yep, so the only one that's not on your resolution is the 2,0544 for the website hosting in two gigabyte increments for Catalyst.
So, so you need an improvement for that, uh, 2,500 dot 4,500?
So I, I would need improvement for the accounts payable as presented and then also another, and then amendment to include the Catalyst bill for 2,544 out of IT.
So I would, I would move to accounts payable and the Catalyst bill in voice for 2,544, zero cents? Okay?
Okay. And then who seconded, have they approved it?
I did second. I would accept that.
Accept that. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carried. Next we have park board commission items. What do we have there? Is that the bills that we need to approve?
That's anything, sorry, that's anything from the park board that the commission also needs to approve in this meeting.
Okay, I think it was bills, we had bills, accounts payable and then?
Budget amendment?
Budget amendment.
I guess I could start with the budget amendment.
Our change orders, right?
And our change orders.
I have it written down here if you want me to reiterate it. So the commission would need to approve, um, a budget amendment for $12,109 to be added to the equipment line for county park in the 2024 budget. And then also to approve the transfer of the $12,109 from that equipment county park line to county road and bridge.
Is that one amendment or one motion or two?
That's the full motion.
Look for a motion of that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend the 2024, 2024 budget for county parks to include $12,190 in the equipment line. And additionally, approve the transfer from county park to county road and bridge in the amount of $12,190.
Is it from county road and bridge to county pu- road or park?
From, from equipment line in county park to county road and bridge.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote and Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. And we have the accounts payable or the change orders, right?
So I would move that, I would move that we approve the change orders number two for $700 and change order number?
Five.
Five for $2,780.
Do we have the, the other bill they submitted too, is it just to do with the change orders now?
Okay, and then, well, that, that came out of the capital fund of, or the projects fund. Do we need a motion on that Lisa? I don't think we need it when on that one, so, because that's, that's already been approved.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion then for the two change orders, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Does that cover all the items in for the park board? Please so. Okay, next we have years of service recognition.
Step up here, Sheriff. Congratulations, five years of service for the county. And also we have the chief deputy Ray Kaler, he's not here, but he has five years, we know that previous service he's actually has twelve and a half years with the county.
Thank you.
Okay, next do the sheriff's report.
Chairman, commissioners, good morning. December highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department. Total calls for service, 1,486. This is up from 1,054 last year. Hundred eighty-nine traffic stops, this is up from 122 last year. Three hundred and fourteen public relations stops, this is up from 131 last year. Twenty-seven bar chick, checks, this is up from six last year. Seven theft related calls for services is up from five last year. Thirty-two canine usages. Four truck rig stops and she participated in a twenty-four additional calls for service. Responded to twenty-four accidents. One of those was fatality, three hit and run, two injury, eighteen property. That fatality is actually the, the train related incident, uh, in town here. Transports, there was twenty-six prisoner, nine court, five medical, two juvenile, one assist and two mental health. Civil division attempted a hundred and fifty-seven paper services. Thirty-seven of those were subpoenas. Hundred and sixteen were civil and thirteen were criminal. There was ninety-one total arrests for the sheriff's department in December. Sixty-three of those were warrants served. Uh, we participated in a couple Christmas events that went very well this month. One of those was the event at the mall. And then the event in Gladstone, I don't know what they're doing out there, but it's working for them. That was another, uh, very well attended event out in Gladstone. Uh, vehicle repairs, I'm not going to, uh, name which vehicle publicly here, but we are going to probably stop utilizing, uh, one of the vehicles that we've been getting because the repairs on that particular brand are through the roof. And, uh, even the repairs that we're making, we're making it again and again and again. So I don't know what the, the issue is, but even the replacement parts are going out on us, so. Uh, we have a new, new hire that starts next week. Uh, he came over to us from the police department, so we're, uh, very excited. That is, of course, the new position that you guys opened. Uh, we moved a patrolman into that detective position that you guys authorized and then we filled his spot with, uh, the new hire. Um, I was just made aware yesterday and I'll get with Elaine on this, but, uh, the police department intends on raising our percentage for the dispatch center from thirty-three to forty-two percent. Uh, and they're willing to do this slowly over the next couple of years. I think up to three years if we need to, but we're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar, give or take increase there, so. Keep that in mind when you go to do the budget for next year. But again, like I said, I'll visit with Elaine on that and see if that's something that can, uh, go through emergency management. Or if you want that to go through emergency management, right now that goes through their budget exclusively, so. Questions?
Well, the canine use, what kind of cases are they doing later thirty-two?
Um, well, for example, Dave is heading to, um, Deputy Cloud is heading to, uh, home on the range today to assist them with a canine sniff. Uh, but that can range anywhere from, uh, public relation stops, vehicle sniffs, school sniffs, uh, apprehension stuff. We'll, we'll, uh, quite often, uh, more often than not, we're assisting the guys in Dickinson with the apprehension stuff. Uh, these two dogs that we have with us right now do not have a, uh, physical apprehension, but as you know, dogs are a good deterrent and the bad guys usually give up before we deploy the dogs, so.
Any activity in drugs or?
Um, we haven't had any, uh, big stuff recently. Like I said, I think it was, uh, four months ago, we had that two and a half pounds of meth. But, uh, since then, it's just mostly, uh, personal use stuff.
Okay. Any other questions, the sheriff?
Do you know how the dispatch percentage is determined?
Um, that goes back several years ago. Um, and the formula was that of, uh, usage, I believe. Um, and for whatever reason, the ambulance service is under our umbrella. Don't ask me why, that's something we'll have to have them come to the table on, but, um, when they figure out percentages, that was a part of our percent. Um, and then of course rural fire, um, all that.
So like the Dickinson ambulance is under our umbrella?
Yes. So Dickinson ambulance, rural fire, um, uh, I would assume that means all the rural fire in Stark County, so. Uh, it's not just the sheriff's department that we talk about that.
It's my understanding that, uh, we met with Lieutenant Hannel and Liz from dispatch that there, I think what we're gonna try to do is get an MOU together between the county and, and the city, which I don't think even exists at this point. I think that those agreements have been handshake agreements for years and years and years and this.
If there is one, it's well expired.
Yes. Well, it's been, you know, longstanding, but, um, so, I mean, if there is an increase, I mean, that's news to us, but I, it'd be nice to see the justification and why they're thinking that, so.
Sure. And from what I was told yesterday, we're paying more of that, uh, what, apparently we agreed to thirty-three percent. Now we're paying more of the thirty, twenty-nine to thirty percent over time and attrition, so. So we're actually paying less than what we probably should be or have been for a couple of years.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, Road and Superintendent Alhizer.
Well, good morning, everyone. Um, this is kind of a little rundown what the road department's up to. We're actually hauling, uh, scoria south to Richardson, south to Antelope, and we got a lot of them little, kind of really minimal traveled roads. And, uh, it's, it's working out good for, we're just blasting some scoria on it, so they're in wet seasons, you know, they can kind of get through and it's, uh, it's amazing. The guys are putting on four hundred plus miles a day, you know, just, just hauling, but, uh, we've never had that opportunity to work this late and actually put material on the roads. It's roads that we probably won't plow, so we don't worry about plowing it off. But there's a lot of cut across trails where farmers cut from one road to the next and, and this way they'll be able to, uh, they get through. And I think there's a lot of people that are kind of appreciating that. Um, another item, uh, yeah, act- actually after this coming week here, I think we got about three good more days we can haul. Then I think we're gonna pull in our reins and, uh, go into our, uh, maintenance and repair that we do all winter. We got breaks and all kinds of stuff. And hopefully this coal snap isn't gonna last too long. And once we get through that, um, I believe we got a MOU, but I will let KLJ take care of that with the city of Dickinson. Um, last Thursday, we sent off our, uh, uh, flex funding application. And I'd like to thank Neil and Bernie. You know, they, we sat in on a meeting. Um, we had our senators and our house representatives at a meeting. I think it went real well. They all supported. Uh, last week, uh, we attended, uh, Dunn County Commission meeting. The Dunn County Commission supported this project. I think it's great, so. Um, and I'd like to, special thanks to Jeremy. He, he worked long and hard at putting out this application. If you read it, he put a lot of work and time into it. And, uh, I'll tell you what, I'll be really disappointed if, if that project is not selected, because they had a, a list of criterias you had to hit and we hit every one, you know, right on, so. And, and, and the biggest thing is they talk about a shovel ready project, this project that's ready to bid and there's, it's, it's really simple. So I'm just, I'm really hopeful that, uh, we'll get some funding. I'm not, I don't know if we'll get it all, but I guess whatever we can, it'll be appreciated. I know there's a lot of other counties, you know, had put in for that too, so I hope, uh, hopefully we'll get a shining star and maybe get a little money. But other than that, um, I really don't have anything else unless you have something for me.
I too would, uh, like to commend you and Jeremy for putting, uh, all this effort. Uh, it was definitely an educational, uh, event for our local legislators. Uh, of what isn't, you know, to deal with that project, so, uh, good job and good luck and, uh, keep your fingers crossed and maybe we'll see a couple dollars.
One more thing, you know, you, we talked about that. We actually rented, um, elder care bus. We took the crew out on the route, come back in while we, and the biggest goal is to get all the traffic off of Highway twenty-two, because there's fifteen thousand vehicles a day traveling twenty-two, pass them all and out. And as we pull off the interstate, we got a big semi loaded hay in front of us and pretty soon we looked behind us, here's another semi loaded, one of the, Mike LaForest, he said, I had it all planned. He said, so when they went on the stride that I called them and told them to come out. But that's what we're trying to do is get the traffic off these heavy loads in front of them all and, and deter them around for safety. And we had great support from the public, all of our, uh, industry. You know, there's a lot of big grain farmers that come out of Dunn County, you know, which will use it and are pretty excited about it, so, but anyway, thank you.
Okay. Is anybody here from interstate engineering? No. What Highland Engineering? No, Northern Plains?
Morning. So I didn't have a whole lot to really update. Um, hundred thirty-first over by Bellfield. Um, nothing obviously happened with the construction activity over the last month. Um, design projects, thirty-second, one oh seven, Al kind of hit on that, uh, really well. Uh, we got that flex funding application in and took a lot of work. Uh, appreciate everyone's, um, commitment on that. Um, I think we, I'm a little biased, of course. I think we got a really good application in. Um, I'm not sure when we're gonna hear. It could be a month or two before we get any notification if we got any money or all of it or what, but, um, got the plans ready, just kind of ready for some, some funding identified, whether it's flex funding or, uh, local funds, whatever, but that one's kind of ready to go. Although that's really all I had. Al kind of stole my thunder a little bit with flex funding, but, um, cross your fingers like, like Mr. Messer said. And I think we'll get some funding, it's just a matter of, of how much, so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the work you're doing there, bypass project. Okay, we got KLJ.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is James Kiderowski here for Andrew Krebs to give an update on our projects. First, just like to touch on the Highway ten and one hundred sixteenth Avenue Southwest Roundabout Project. Just a few updates. KLJ collected traffic data for this intersection. We're currently working on the cultural report and SOV letters. Also, the geotechnical report has been completed and we are planning to begin working on preliminary layouts this winter. Um, just a reminder, this project is currently programmed for a 2027 construction. Uh, our goal is to get this project ready to bid a bit sooner than that, so if, uh, if the bid opening can be moved up, if that opportunity comes up, uh, when that funding becomes available, we could, we could do so. The other project I want to touch on is a 2024 chip and fog seal on Highway ten east of Dickinson. This project was bid December eighth, 2023 through the DOT with Morris Seal Coat and Trucking Incorporated as the apparent low bidder at one million eight hundred and four thousand two hundred seventy dollars eighty-one cents. This is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand below our engineer's estimate, so that was good news to see. And then I'd like to move on to that MOU mentioned by Al. The city of Dickinson signed that MOU for that portion of the project that's within the city's, uh, urban limits. Uh, we're just asking Stark, Stark County to sign that MOU and provide a copy back to us, which we can then forward to the city.
Mr. Kiderowski, I just have one question about the MOU, so, um, in subsection two, it talks about city funds and it says that the, uh, payment that Dickinson will be willing to, um, pay is a maximum of eighteen thousand dollars. And that's based on the engineer's estimate for work within Dickinson city limits. And as I'm sure you know, language and contracts matters a lot. So when they say maximum, they say that's maximum. So are you, um, how, uh, how well do you feel about this estimate that that is going to be, uh, a concrete estimate and not go over? Because if it does go over, then obviously Stark County is gonna be on the hook for those funds.
Correct. Well, I believe those estimates were based on our engineer's estimate and being that, uh, the bids actually came in lower as well. I think we can be even more confident that we'll be underneath that maximum eighteen thousand dollars, but.
Where's Morris out of?
Minnesota somewhere, yeah.
I look for a motion then for the chair to sign this Miranda, Miranda of understanding, memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding relative to, uh, Stark County Project forty-five ten.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Motion, opposed, opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
And I'm gonna just step in here for a second. Um, community help, behavior health is, I think, next on the agenda.
Yes.
And I didn't see Ms. Simon, so I emailed her and apparently there was a misunderstanding with the date, so she's in Bismarck, so that will not be, uh, going today, so.
Okay.
Neil, you had something that you wanted to add with county property?
Yeah.
Possibly fill that spot?
Sure. So, um, we have a, the house that we just tore down over in, um, Richardson. I was trying to look for the value we had placed on that for sale. Um, I don't know if anybody would have that out in front of them. Uh, I'll just keep going. Uh, so we were approached, I, I received a phone call, the, uh, healthcare facility over in Richardson. As, uh, many other places, uh, around have a tough time keeping help, particularly on the housing side. So they are applying for a grant to, uh, come in and, uh, put a modular home on that lot. They would like to use that lot, um, and therefore provide housing, um, for the workers out at the healthcare facility. And, uh, most of it's gonna be covered by a grant through the Department of Commerce. Um, there's a provision in there for, uh, workforce housing. And so they are applying for this grant and wanted to know what the value of that lot would be to them in that grant. While we have a value on there, we've torn the house down for an additional twenty-some thousand dollars. So, um, I know we have, there's some statutory requirements if we change the value, but, uh, I'd like to start that process today if we could. Or are we fine with leaving it as is? We've done it before where we've taken a-
Or are we fine with leaving it as is? We've done it before, where we've taken a property back, tore the property down, left the value the same. But this one's, just bringing it forth to see what our wishes are.
We've gotten all the invoices in for that?
For the demolition?
Yes, I think we paid that last meeting. And one thing we did do is, when we cleaned it up, you know, we didn't bury everything. We took evidence. There's no hidden buried. The city was out, officially plugged with water and sewer. So, I would, I would really love for us to have a new owner on that lot, so we don't have to maintain it, because we've had enough things to maintain other than a lot somewhere. And it's a beautiful lot. I mean, that's, anybody seen it before and sees it now, it's great improvement.
So, in a roundabout way, are we abating the taxes on this? I mean, those costs would be go towards the taxes, correct?
Yeah, we would do it at the time of sale, yes.
Can I ask a quick question? A lot of times when it's property within the city, we offer the city the property first. Has the city, has Richardson been approached about buying that lot back?
I, I mean, it was sent to them when the house was still on it, right?
Right.
So, there hasn't been anything since, now that it's been torn down. And I think that if you're, I would say, selling a lot, are you looking, as a commission, to recoup the funds for tearing down the house?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we, we did the one on the west side of Dickinson, or excuse me, Richardson, a couple of years ago. We tore that one down with the asbestos, and we still sold it for the value of the taxes, I believe. And the, this one's a little unique for the fact that it's not going to a private individual. It would be actually going to an entity that would work. So, I'm open to whatever, but I just want us to kind of put a value in place so that they can proceed with their grant application.
So, I'm guessing, Amanda, it would still, like, if you change the value?
We'd have to have a hearing on the review.
It's, there's still gonna have to be a hearing, and other people are open to, to purchase that lot, too, though. I don't think you can set it aside.
Well, that's why I was wondering if Richardson was approached, because, you know, I don't know. Perhaps the best course of action is to see if Richardson wants to buy the lot back, because they can legally, and then Richardson can work with this group. And then it's, you know, within the city, as opposed to us becoming involved, and then Richardson can recoup whatever, you know, their costs are, and we can figure in our costs to recoup, if that's how you want to do it with a small city with Richardson. Those are just some, some options. But yes, I mean, once you re, you know, we just had this conversation with the parcels. Those parcels, I think, are unique, right? Because they're landlocked. So, that's, we knew that if there's gonna be a purchaser, it's probably gonna be just
The owner.
The owner of the surrounding. This is different. It, once you reappraise that property, you know, obviously, it's, it's up for public. Anyone really can come in and, and make a bid on it, or buy that up. Whether that matters to the commission, I don't know. I, you know, so.
Well, I know the, what, the, the value that we had on it before included a house that was falling in on itself, rat-infested, and that's all gone now, and all the way to the garbage, the dump. So, it's a clean-bear lot. I would probably move that we would put, reassess that property value, or put it at around 20,000.
I've got a question, you know, maybe you could answer. And I asked, talked to Natalie yesterday. You know, there's special assessments on that. Now that the county owns that lot, are we on the hook for the specials?
Well, the, the special's indebtedness is through the city of Richardson. It would, I would, I don't want to speak out.
And that's one of the good reasons to sell it back to the city, because the city can abate those specials. And I, I have to check the statute. I don't know that we necessarily can.
It definitely seems to be an issue if we're abating city specials. I mean, it was kind of an issue with Bellfield.
Because we put the city at a disadvantage, obviously, then, because they've stuck all of this money into it. And then, the easiest route would be to offer it back to Richardson and let them buy it from the city of Richardson.
Okay. So, the question reiterated, then, what was the value we approved? What was it, the November or December meeting when we put value on this?
It was 48,400.
Four, what's that?
Forty-eight thousand four hundred.
Forty-eight thousand four hundred?
That's the minimum sales price for that. Is that 200 Second Avenue East in Richardson?
That's correct, yeah.
So, delinquent taxes through the sale date were 6,100, and then the minimum sales price is 48,400.
And that was based on the assessed value previously established, I'm suspecting.
And that would have covered, that amount, Lana, would have covered the special assessments that Richardson had on that property, correct? That 6,100?
I believe so, yes.
So, the statute, we reestablished, we set a value today. It has to go through a public hearing thirty, for 30 days, and then addressed at the next meeting, the final establishment, or we go and offer it to the city of Richardson for whatever value we establish, other than the 48,000 or the 6,100? Is that correct?
Can we come back to this? I gotta take a look at the statute. I think there might be kind of a special provision if you're offering it back to the city, as opposed to reassessing.
I don't think you have to do the special, like, hearings.
Right.
Per se, if you're, if you're offering it back to the city.
Yeah.
So.
And we can establish any value on that?
To offer it back to the city, yes.
Okay, got it. All right. We can, let's, we can move on to something else.
Chair, though, do, did Cory make a motion? Did you have?
No, I did not. There was discussion. So, I said.
Then we'll go on then to the 2024 burn ban restriction.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So, looking for approval to implement the 2024 burn restriction. I've made this decision after consulting with the Stark County Fire Chiefs. We think it would be best to run the burn restriction from January to December. And this burn restriction would go into place. It's based off of conditions. So, anytime we're in a high, very high extreme, we would restrict burning, and anytime we're in a red flag warning, we would go into a burn ban. So, I've just updated some of the language on there to reflect that we're taking into consideration the conditions, the resources we have, and then the impact to, impact potential to life and health. So, those would be the considerations we take when we were, would be restricting burning in the county. City has always restricted burning, so this would be applied to the county.
Couple of years ago, we brought this in. We approved it, and I'm just, does this run parallel with the language? Because I know we talked about which stages would trigger.
Mm-hmm. It, it has similar language. I've updated some of the considerations we take, but the, when it goes into effect, yep.
The high, very high.
That is the same. And we're trying to align ourselves with how the State Forest Service runs their restrictions. That way, everyone's kind of across the board the same, and there's no confusion.
Okay. Any other questions? I ought to look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we approve the fire emergency and burn restrictions for Stark County twenty, for the year of 2024, as presented.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can you do the consolidated IT contract next?
Mr. Chairman, just to offer a little background on our current IT, or the proposed IT contract with Consolidated. We currently are under contract, well, actually, not, we aren't. It's the new year of 2024, but in 2023, we're under contract for IT network support from Consolidated. There's been a long process with our IT committee, which I think has done a great job. There's been a lot of input and discussion with Consolidated. This year's contract in front of us is for $84,700 to be billed monthly. That'll provide us 848, 840 hours of labor from Consolidated to address any of our IT issues here at the county. This year's contract is actually less than the previous years because of the subtraction of social services from the contract. We've had great discussion whether or not 840 hours is gonna be adequate for the county. We believe that it is at this point. I mean, obviously, we would prefer not to go over the 840 hours, because then we start paying on an hourly rate. But overall, the IT is doing fairly well, and Consolidated has really stepped up to the plate and collaborated with our IT committee. So, I, I'm in support of going forward with this IT contract with Consolidated. So, I would make that motion to approve the contract, the IT contract with Consolidated for the year 2024.
One second, Doc.
Motion of second. Any other discussion? Not a good roll call vote. Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
I, I found what I was looking for, if you wanna.
Okay.
Okay. So, as far as selling back to the city, any property acquired by the city or by the county, which is subject to a special assessment lien for improvements made by a city, may be sold to that city for cash at any price agreed on between the Board of County Commissioners and the governing board of the city. So, you can sell it back to the city at whatever price, because there's special, there's a special lien on it. As far as the lien that's on that, or the special assessments, if you want to drop the price of the property below that 6,100, which is what the special assessments are, you have to get permission from the city of Richardson in order to do that. So, those are the, the two caveats with this property that you're looking at. So, those are, that's what the statute says.
So, I guess, yeah, clear as mud. I guess the only question would be, would Richardson be interested in buying this lot if, in fact, anybody other than the, you know, if the grant application for the healthcare facility falls through? So, I don't know that that's our issue, but I would just bring that to the table.
Maybe it's someone, something you want to reach out to Richardson and explain what's happening, and see what their thoughts are on it, because depending on what they want to do, then there'll be some different legal avenues that you're gonna have to take.
Well, I'd suggest we do that. Let's, let's pick a value and offer it to the city. And I know the healthcare, the facility out there is obviously working hand in hand with the city. So, it'd be great if they just take it and run with it, whatever amount we decide to do. So, I'd be open.
Chair, I just want to point out that that 6,100 wouldn't include all of the specials that are due potentially in the future on that property. It's just the specials through the 2023 billing date.
And the delinquent taxes, delinquent taxes and specials.
Yes, yes.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Those specials may, the total specials may be much more than that 6,100.
But Richardson themselves would know where it's at, because we get the specials from them for their own properties. So, I think if you just want to set a price, and I can send a letter over to Richardson and offer it.
Do we have any, not trying to set precedence, do we have precedence on this, where we've done something like, something like this before, so that if this happens again in the future, you know, I don't know. I mean, to me, I think a reasonable number, somewhere between 10 and 15,000 would be realistic.
In the past, we used to offer them back to the cities for a dollar.
Mm-hmm. But I don't know what you have.
But that was lots that we didn't incur an expense on.
Correct.
Right. See, this one, we have some money in. So, I'm willing to absorb part of that, because we'd have to, anyway.
Realistic value of that lot, in that 10 to 15,000 range.
I think if you owned it and, and put it on the market, it's probably over 20. You know, there's gonna be some costs incurred to, I would suspect you'd have to get new water and sewer into the street. So, there's some costs there, which is not associated typically with your standard lot. But, yeah, I think so. It's a nice lot, like Al said. It's a nice corner lot. It's got some trees on it, so.
And you left the trees?
We did our darndest not to tear them down. There was a big pine tree, and there was a big ash tree, and there was someone behind the old garage. So, we took down the only thing that we had to, to, you know, maneuver through there.
The unfortunate circumstance of us getting property back is we have to take care of it, tear houses down, and so on and so forth. So, the county gets left holding the bag on this thing. And it'd be nice if we could possibly recoup some of that back to the county.
So, I would propose $19,000 for the property.
Is it a motion, then?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to have a second?
Second.
A second. Any other discussion?
Let's make something clear, though. That motion is just for the city, not, you're not reappraising it for the public. It's just an amount that you are willing to go to the city of Richardson with. I want to make sure that motion, that's clear in the motion, if that's what your intent is.
Correct, it is. So, they get first right at it, right?
And that 19,000 is including the taxes and specials currently owed, or are you intending the 19,000 to just?
No, I would say that, that gets them a deed, and they take risk and all other associates after that.
Okay.
Okay, that's your motion, then?
Correct.
And your second. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Okay. Guess we're pretty close to 10 o'clock, or is there anybody for the tax abatement? Is anybody scheduled for 10 o'clock? Is the city gonna be present for that, or?
I will not be here. The guy that's representing these companies, I think, will be, I will please dial in.
Okay. Okay. You want to do the pledge of us assets? Can we do that in a couple minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do the pledge of assets, then.
So, for our January pledge of assets, we're doing, it's changed a little bit, because obviously, we have a sweep account now. And so, that's, does not have to be pledged towards, because it's already secured up to 50 million. So, if you look at Brevera, our pledged par and market value, this is appropriate to cover, this was appropriate for pledging through December 31 of our funds that were coming in, our deposits that were coming in at the end of December, is what this covered over the 50. So, that pledge, accepting Brevera's pledges, that does cover where we're at with Brevera. Dakota Community Bank, they keep a little bit of an additional amount, because we go back and forth between the accounts. So, that pledged amount of 3,925 is sufficient, because our payroll stuff that we have is covered under its own security. It's not part of the pledges anymore. So.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Brevera pledge of assets dated December 31, 2023, and the Dakota Community Bank and Trust pledge of assets, also dated December 31, 2023, as submitted.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Okay, it's 10 o'clock, then. I'll open the scheduled 10 a.m. abatement hearing on that. We have someone on the phone from Merlin Hotel Group?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Michael Block with Ryan LLC. I'm representing Merlin Hotel Group in this abatement hearing. Essentially, for this one, at the local hearing, a reduction to 3.9 million was passed due to a sale price of 2,860,000. was passed due to a sale price of two million eight hundred sixty thousand. While we believe that two million eight hundred sixty thousand is really the value of this property, we are okay with just passing forward the three point nine million that was passed at the local abatement hearing.
Okay, what was your name again for the record? You state your name for the, for the record, please.
Michael something.
Uh, yeah, Michael Block, that's Ryan LLC.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any questions?
So this is for twenty-one and twenty-two?
Yes.
Natalie? Okay. And?
Okay, we got a little feedback with the mics, go ahead.
So if you wanna present, that's fine, on behalf of Joe, I do have a couple of questions, so.
Okay. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Natalie Wandler, the Stark County Tax Director. Joe is out with health issues, he won't be back for quite a while, so he's, I watched their meeting actually this morning and the city approved the three million nine hundred, which would be twenty thousand per room approximately. I'm not, you know, I think when they initially put their application in it, they had it at two point eight, and then when they adjusted their applications, they went with the three point nine and the, the city board approved both of them at the three point nine for twenty-one and twenty-two.
And the twenty-three is not yet eligible for abatement?
Correct. Well, it is now because they could actually apply for it now that it's passed. Once the tax statements go out, they can apply for it.
Got it.
Yep.
And did Joe give a, I mean, you know, the goal obviously is to get to market value and, you know, when you have a big asset like that selling, it's probably a gray area of what actual market value is, so. I, I, so we would be reducing twenty twenty-one from four seven five one to three point nine?
Yep.
And twenty twenty-two from four seven three three to three point nine?
Correct.
Okay. And that's Joe's recommendation to accept it, I believe.
That's what the city approved, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys have the memo from Joe?
Yep.
And you can see that the twenty-four proposed is what Vanguard's doing with their reappraisal for this next year. I know he's, that's not a definite number yet for twenty-four, but, because they've got a couple more sales that have come in, so they're gonna look at a couple things, I think he stated in the meeting, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Stark County accept the recommendation and revaluation of parcel number. Where's it at here?
Very top. Ten fifteen dash zero one hundred dash two hundred.
Exactly, exactly that one.
Zero two hundred.
For the years of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two to three million nine hundred thousand, as per the city recommendation.
Okay, a motion to have a second.
Second.
A second, any other discussion? Not a roll call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, any other second one then?
Yep, the second property is Raven Ridge Apartments. That one, they are requesting for the twenty twenty-one, two point eight, two million eight hundred thirty-one thousand. The city denied both the twenty-one and twenty-two on that one. They, Joe's got a list of sales and other information that I don't think you guys have because Deb just sent it to me this morning, but I will hand that out to you, and.
That might make a little bit more sense, I press full on both sides.
Okay.
Do you have anybody on the phone that's representing Raven Ridge owners?
It's the same gentleman.
Same as, okay.
Ah, yeah, that is, that's me again.
Okay, that's you, okay, thank you. Do you have any comment or?
I'm having a little bit of a tough time hearing you, but as long as you can hear me.
We can hear you. You can go ahead if you have any comment, no?
Uh, yeah, so this is Michael Block again, representing Raven Ridge. The assessment of this property was twelve million two hundred sixty-five thousand, or ninety-seven thousand dollars per unit in twenty twenty-one, and then it was increased to fifteen million two hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit in twenty twenty-two. So the reason we filed this is that the property is sold in a two-property transaction along with the one hundred and sixty-eight unit Timber Cove apartment on twelve thirty, twenty twenty-one, so just before the twenty-two assessment date. This was an openly marketed arms-length transaction, and the total sale price for the two properties was fifteen million two hundred fifty thousand. And then the subject allocated price from that transaction was six million five hundred thirty-five thousand. My analyzation of the two properties' incomes would place the allocated price at seven million six hundred twenty-five thousand, so a bit above what the property owners are concluding, but still well below both assessment years. So no matter how the price is allocated, it still supports the value during the assessment. Essentially, what your twenty-two assessment is saying is that the Timber Cove apartments, which are comparable, are worthless because the twenty-two assessment is fifteen million for our one property, and the two properties together equal to fifteen million. So that just doesn't make sense. In addition to this, we do an income and sales approach. Income approach predictably indicates a value near the six million five hundred thirty-five thousand, while the sale comparison approach indicates the value in between the sale price and the assessment. So the average sale price for comparable units in the area was sixty-two thousand dollars per unit. Some of those comparable buildings are inferior than this compared to the subject. However, the highest sale per unit transaction was at ninety-two thousand dollars per unit. This goes for the Sierra Ridge Apartment Homes, which is a newer property than the subject, that's higher aspirants and more nineties. So keep in mind, a stronger building sold for ninety-two thousand dollars per unit were assessed at ninety-seven thousand dollars per unit and one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit. So our abatement application states a requested value of nine million four hundred thirty-four thousand, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars per unit. In the spirit of compromise, we're requesting a value of eleven million six hundred thousand, that's ninety-two thousand dollars per unit, so equal to the sale of a, of a superior building for both twenty-one and twenty-two assessments, which figure is seventy-eight percent higher than the allocated sale price and fifty-two percent higher than my valuation for the property. So in summary, the property is sold for an allocated price of six million three hundred, sorry, six million five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. We are requesting a value of eleven million six hundred thousand for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Brooke?
This is Joe's information, right?
Yes.
Not, not the applicant's?
Yep, that's Joe's information.
I guess before, I would wanna go any further on disagreeing with any recommendation that the city assessor made is we'd need some additional information, you know? We don't know what the operating agreement on, or the operating statements on these buildings shows. Those are the, that kinda tell all.
Yeah, and I don't have any of that information. Like I said, Joe's out on medical leave.
Yeah.
So.
And I don't have any verification that Sierra Ridge sold for ninety-two a unit or not. I'm, I'm assuming that's correct. I'm sure we could look that up really quick. So that would be.
So do you wanna table this application?
Yeah. I, I would, can they re, come back and reapply for an abatement if they're turned down first time unless they have some new information?
They would have to go through the appeal process.
Okay. And that goes to the state, not us.
District court first, I think.
Right. Yeah, I know the information and it's tough to get when you have these big sales, it's tough to get a accurate value when you sell them per door because per, every door is not the same. And so I, I do sympathize with the applicant, but my fallback is, is the, we have a city assessor and it's their job to do what they do, and so at this point, unless there's overwhelming, compelling evidence that I don't have in front of me, I would, I'd be inclined to deny and, and accept the city's recommendation again on this one, which is to keep it the same.
Is that your motion?
Sure.
I'd second it.
A motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we wanna take a break or should we move on?
We don't have much left, do we, or do we? I don't care, either way.
Can move on then, I guess, then. The next, you have appointment to the Water Resources Board member. What you have here is, we had one application for that position, that was Byron Schenk. Applied for that position. I believe the one that was serving, one didn't no longer want to stay on, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Gary doesn't even live here anymore, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we had, it was the Vector Control Board that resigned, but the Water Resource Board member, Gary B- Bleth, his term was expiring, so.
Yeah, and he doesn't even live here anymore.
So it'd be Byron Schenk who applied for that position.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we appoint Byron Schenk to the Water Resources Board.
Okay. A motion to have a second.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have for the appointment to the Vector Control Board, and that position, the background of that, I guess it was Shonda Amon who's applied for that, and then the one that was serving, no longer wants to serve any longer, correct?
Yes, so Leo Amon would like to, I think his term was up, and this is the person that filed out an application to replace him.
Is that Sean Amon?
Shonda.
Shonda.
Shonda?
Mm-hmm.
What's the term on this one, guys?
This one is.
In July, actually.
And then we'd have to reappoint for three years or something?
He wants, he, he's already retired, like he's done, so.
Can you step up to the mic?
Joe, I appear to see Human Resources Director. Leo wanted to step down after this past year. Usually their season is done in September, so he resigned and so we posted to fill his position, which they start up again in April, so.
So if we, I guess my question is if we appoint someone, what is the term?
They, they could, I guess, complete this term and serve the next three, I think it's a three-year term.
I'm pretty sure it's a three-year term.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's good.
Okay. Look for a motion then to approval for the Vector Control Board.
I would make a motion for Shonda Amon to fill that position.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next, we have the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board on that, and we actually have two members that are on the board right now that would like to stay on, and that's Byron Richard and Kurt Freilich, and then Deneen Dressler, I called her yesterday and she said she wanted off and, because we, if we have anybody else interested, she'd want off because she's served six years and she's quite busy with other things, so. And we had, did one application, Michael Lemay has applied for that position, so I look for a motion to approve three members to the Planning and Zoning.
Were them all three at one time, or do we wanna do it individually here?
I think we can do them all at once.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint Michael Lemay, Kurt Freilich, and Byron Richard to, these are four-year terms, correct?
Yes.
To a four, uh, four-year terms for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed, motion carried. Okay. Next, then we have the, I guess some, some discussion on our portfolios. Is there anybody has these discussion? I guess I'd like to discuss if anybody wants to do any changes on that or, or current portfolios, or what are your wishes on that?
I'm comfortable with the portfolios, I have.
Okay. I did have a, kinda looking at that, I know we, some of the bigger departments, we have two, two commissioners on a portfolio, so I was looking at the road department, we probably should add one to there, we only have one on there, what are your thoughts on that?
We could do that, but pretty much any time that there comes any decisions we, or discussions or whatever, we either have Dean or Neil come in with us anyway, so I mean, if you wanna have, if you wanna get, it's not a big deal.
And I sat in during their, their budgeting last year as well, so I don't have a, a problem helping out or filling in.
As far as IT, do you both want to stay, who is on there now, or do you understand any changes of that, or?
Or which one?
Do you hear what he said?
On the IT, are you still wanting to stay on that, Bernie, or?
Yeah, I don't mind being on there, unless somebody else wants on there, maybe Paul doesn't want me there, I'm fine, but I'm just.
I'm not trying to kick anybody off, I'm just kinda concerned because I, I know it's, we got someone that's pretty techie on the end here, Mr. White, I guess, Commissioner White, so I guess, I don't know, except if you wanna stay on that, that's fine, then.
Oh, if Cory wants to be on the IT, I have no problem with that.
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay. Also, I was looking at that Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council, and it's kinda related to, a lot to with Stark Development, that they're, they're pretty much in line with there, because I guess I served on both of those prior, and I guess there's some going on with some businesses come forward with that, and then they don't get on, they go to the other boards and kinda have a nice background there. What's your thoughts, Neil, on that, about taking that position?
Yeah, that's fine, because a lot of times they actually come to the Development Board meeting, so I'm fine with, with, it's, it's something I enjoy, so I'd certainly do that, if you have no problem with that.
So are there, is there something else you want me to take from you, or?
You know, there's a couple that are really very self-sufficient, that if someone wants to, I'm, I'm not looking to give any up, I would certainly take the full portfolio, but if you wanna take, you know, maybe the, Jessica does an awesome job with VSO, you know, someone could certainly step up to that one, but again, I'm not. you know, someone could certainly step up to that one, but again, I'm not looking to give.
I would, I would step up to that, because it brings me into here, a couple other places to be.
Okay.
So I would do that.
Okay. Anybody else, any other discussion on portfolios? See, other discussion and all of that, I guess if there's something else that comes up, we can discuss it the next meeting, our next meeting is the 16th, correct, January we have?
Yes, the Budget Amendment Meeting.
Yeah.
Did you want to add another person to the road, or are you keeping that the same?
Someone wasn't interested in that, or I can look at it too, as in?
Yeah, I mean, I enjoyed sitting in on the meetings that I'm getting called to, it's very, obviously, the, you know, with my district being primarily rural, it's very, it's very informative, I'm not, I'm open, whatever, you know.
Just if you want to take that on also?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I, I think Al does a very good job of, of keeping everybody in the loop.
Great ideas, very supportive.
If it was somebody other than Al, maybe I'm, I'm doing that, but like I said, the role of the portfolio holder is to be the liaison between the department and the county, and one of the things that I would throw out for discussion is, on some of these, like, whatever, you know, we don't know, for example, I'll just pick on IT since it was kind of tough, we don't know really what's going on in IT, it's running smooth, but maybe occasionally, once a quarter, we get a one paragraph report, either from the portfolio holder or the director, that says, here's what's going on in your IT department, and, you know, and just have a one paragraph, so you, you can do it. And maybe we do that on a quarterly basis, where, you know, you know, we can, we can write up, I can give a report on Stark Development, and Cory could do something on the airport board or whatever, so I, I think that's, that, since we have such quorum-conscious individuals, I think that would be informative, it would be helpful, you know, because if I go to Cory and say, hey, what's happening on the airport, and then we have a conversation, technically, if he goes to somebody else and updates somebody on the airport authority, then we have this, we're in the gray area on, on quarums, and so it'd be nice to have that in writing submitted, so I'd throw that out for discussion.
That question took a while.
Huh?
That question took a while.
Yes, it did.
Okay, I guess, and then we'll go over then, then Roosevelt Custer will move over to, to Mr. Masser, and then Cory will take over the Veteran Services, and what the other, the IT, also Commissioner White would have, is there any other changes that I missed?
I still don't think he answered the road department.
Road department.
Which, for Al, probably, he probably wants to know who his portfolio is.
He would.
Well, I guess I would make the comment, if Al's willing to continue to function the way he is, I'm, we can leave it at one, but if there's concerns, maybe at some point we can add a second one to it. It is, it is the largest expenditure we have.
And I'll, and I'll sit in again during budgeting season on that, if that helps.
The day-to-day operations, if I have anything that's, you guys are always, I've, in the last 20 years, I've been, think I've been pretty upfront with the board as things go on, if there's something I feel comfortable with, I make that decision, if I need backup, I usually call my portfolio holder, so it's totally up to you what you guys want to do.
Okay. Leave as is then, or do we have, you got some other suggestions?
Silence.
You know, there was a situation came up the other day too, that Al and I, this was about, I said, we need a second opinion on it, which we reached out for, whatever you guys all feel is, is good, and Al and I communicate pretty much weekly, sometimes daily, so however you want to do it, I mean, different people have different expertise, so it's all good.
Okay, any other discussion then?
Well, it is, like Neil had mentioned, it is a large portfolio, I think it's probably good, I mean, although just almost a backup, I mean, Bernie could continue to be the, the primary, right? And if there's something else that needs to come up, or if he can't respond for whatever reason, it's nice to have someone designated. I don't think you want to get too many people.
I'll be the second, I'm fine with that.
Okay, too many people involved, some things get lost in translation sometimes, but Al, you are really good about, you know, you reach out to various people, which is good, so, but I don't think it hurts to have a second person involved in the event that there's, that's, that's needed.
I agree. And I, and I'll be the second.
Okay, anything else?
That sounds, that sounds good.
Anything else we need to discuss?
Yeah, you know what?
Yes.
This phone call hearing really totally sucks, sorry for my language there, but I can hear Cory, I can hear Karen, Dean's a little muffled, and it gets worse as it goes down, so it's not the microphone that we use for recording, I don't believe, I believe it's that little unit that does the phone call, and he just like this other gentleman that was just on the phone, he couldn't hear anything that would be discussed either, and so this week, maybe we need another one of those units sitting on the, on the desktop there or something, but you have, it's.
Chair, we're actually.
Yeah, this one is really tough.
We're actually testing Zoom today with our staff in the office, so I think at the next meeting, we'll have Zoom available, and, and they'll be able to hear just like we can in the room, so I think it'll be better, and, and you could actually see their faces if you so wanted to.
There's the delay also, I mean, when.
The lag time, yeah.
You're asked for votes, there's what, about a five-second delay, so it almost sounds like the person's voting nay and saying, yes, and.
Yeah.
Bernie, did you hear, did you hear what Lana said over there?
You did?
Um, we're actually testing a new, a new system.
Yeah, you said, I heard you talking about, I zoomed, so I think, I think that, we'll see how that goes, and hopefully that fixes these problems.
Okay. There's nothing else, and our next meeting will be January 16th, for the, complete the budgeting for 2023, and thank you.
Did you approve these?
Yeah, I approved them.
You did the motion? Oh, you don't do a motion?
We already, do we need a motion on the portfolios?
It's your assignment, I think.
Okay.
And I guess I'd like to thank you for electing me chair, and I appreciate your confidence in me.
Just don't let us down, Dean.
Okay, I'll try my best. Okay, seeing nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.